All right, call the order of the meeting of the Elk Grove Township Board of Direct. Trustees, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee Dante.
Present.
Trustee Bussie.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
That's right. Um, any, uh, any, uh, trustee May is not here this evening to do a last-minute business commitment, um, and, um, he's indicated, well, we'll, I will talk to him afterwards and go through whatever important information is, that comes out of this meeting. Is there any public comment? If there's no public comment, um, you have the consent agenda, you have before you authorization of payroll bills, town fund, general assistance, road department sewer, and you have my, my reports on social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, and transportation and financial. Are there any questions? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, discussion on the, uh, on the, an approval of the minutes. This is March 27th, 2023, regular board meeting. Are there any questions or any issues with the minutes?
No.
If not, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Now, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, we're at presentations now. Um, I think first to start out, I think trustee Dante, um, do you want to take the floor?
Yes, sir. Supervisor George and township board, it is with deep regret that I announce my resignation from Elk Grove Township, effective April 17, 2023. I have earned a seat as Mount Prospect trustee in the April 4th election and will not be able to hold both positions. Please know that I have thoroughly appreciated and enjoyed the opportunity to serve with you all on this board. I am proud of our collective achievements and the significant progress that has been made towards improving the importance of the township government. I am particularly honored to have served on several committees and I am truly grateful for the extensive assistance each of you offered. As a board and as individuals, you are all tremendously talented and I feel lucky to have served by your side for these two years. I am hopeful that I have given sufficient advance notice so that we can ensure a smooth transition for the next trustee. I will always champion the township cause and remain an advocate for this level of government. I look forward to seeing many of you and the future accomplishments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vince. The board, do the board have anything, anything people would like to say?
No, I just, uh, just, it's been, it's been nice serving with you, Vince. Like your enthusiasm, you know, your energy, actually. Uh, it was really a nice thing to have on the board and, uh, yeah, I'll miss you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for your service, Vince.
Thank you.
I thank you for your service, but I also thank you for your willingness to serve. In these days, looking for people who have the heart and the dedication to serve their community is something that we should applaud, and I do applaud you for that, and you will be missed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that, um, you're someone we can always count on, you know, anytime we needed help with anything, parades or anything, I knew if I contacted you, would either know what to do or know who to call and, um...
And I'll still do that.
Well, that's the plan, so...
Well, our, our, our loss is the village of Mount Prospect's gain, and I know that on that board, we're going to have a great advocate for the township. You've learned so much about what we do and you've been such a big, big advocate, supporter of township government and the improvements that we've made in here the last two years. But I'd like you to get up, I got a resolution that I'd like to read.
Okay.
Should I go over here? Mike, yeah. All right, so Resolution 2023-02, Vincent Dante, recognition of superior service. Whereas Vincent Dante faithfully served the residents of Elk Grove Township as a trustee for two years, and whereas he consistently demonstrated an unparalleled commitment to ensuring that Elk Grove Township itself is a government body focused on meeting, on meeting the needs of its constituents, providing superior customer service, and exercising uncompromising fiscal responsibility. And whereas he played an active and indispensable role in guiding the township through the final stages of a major facility organizational realignment, which dramatically improved township communication efficiencies and cost effectiveness. Whereas he provided key support for the introduction of numerous new and native township services, including the addition of free to resident psychiatric care, a medical closet, a veteran's service office, and the establishment of new staff positions for senior services. And whereas he actively sought assignment to township subcommittees and related organizations, including the Township Agency Grant Committee, the Township Social Services Review and Improvement Committee, and the Elk Grove Township Community Empowerment. On all of these roles, he provided invaluable insight and great judgment. Whereas, and whereas he was a, was a consistent advocate for the township taxpayer, constantly looking for opportunities to more effectively manage township resources without degrading the service. This in turn allowed the township to avoid raising its property tax levy every year that he was a board member. And whereas he deeply, he was deeply involved in supporting his community through active membership and leadership in several community organizations such as the Mount Prospect Lions Club, the Colombian Italian Club, and local hockey coach. And whereas he earned the respect and appreciation of the township board and the residents of Elk Grove Township for his energy and unswerving dedication to making township government more effective and responsive in meeting the needs of its constituents while always maintaining a commitment to financial responsibility. Now therefore Supervisor George Bussie and Elk Grove Township Board does hereby recognize and extend its sincere thanks to Vincent Dante for his years of dedicated service, not only as a township trustee, but as a community leader. Furthermore, the board thanks him for the energy, integrity, and sense of teamwork that he brought to this position, which benefited all who were fortunate to have known him and worked with him. This is dated the 17th day of April, 2023, signed by the supervisor of the township. So Vince? And I know, like you said, that you'll always be, uh, be basically backed up in your service. I'd also like to present you with a little talk of our team. This is your name tag? Oh, this is...
Yeah, it's not.
And, um, and this is just an appreciation for the, your service from 2020, March of 2023.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
I appreciate it. We appreciate all the nice words.
Thank you. This is a great board.
Yeah.
Very nice people. You know, one thing I didn't do?
We have to vote.
I didn't have it approved. So, hope, I hope it's approved now. Yeah, I know. So is there a motion to approve a resolution, uh, 2023-02?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
You abstain.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Um, okay, uh, so I, at this time, we, um, are appointing a new trustee, um, David Perns. Uh, let's see. Uh, David, um, came to our attention several years ago when our assessor recommended that we, um, uh, check in with him and see if he was interested in, uh, serving the township in some, some degree of responsibility. Um, and when an opening came up on the agency grant committee, I reached out and David was very, um, very supportive and volunteered to participate in the agency grant committee, um, which was headed up by our clerk. The word that I received back was that he was a great addition to the board and that his, uh, his input was very valuable and insightful. Since that time, uh, we have had, um, now around that time, we had, we've had two board members have to step down, one for personal reasons and then Vince because of his election to the, the board. Um, in December, we appointed, uh, Brian May to the board, who is not here this evening. And then tonight, I'm, I'm happy to be able to appoint, um, I'm making a recommendation to appoint, uh, David Perns. Um, I, I'm going to ask the board for their approval, um, but I, at this particular stage, I will note that, um, uh, he is very qualified to serve on this, on the board, and I think he'd be a great addition. David holds a doctorate in chiropractic and owns Perns Back and Neck Clinic and Laser Pain Center in Arlington Heights. He was, as I indicated, a, or he is a member of the Township Agency Grant Committee, um, and which, which allocates funds for the mental health and social service agencies that serve the township residents. He additionally has volunteered for the last two years, uh, for District 214's internship program that assists high school students in determining their future careers. Um, and he is a, um, he is a, a mainstay in the community and I'm very pleased that he's, um, indicated that he would be, um, he would want to serve. So if, could I, if, if I get a motion to approve the appointment of David Perns to the board, uh, to the board?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, is there, um, is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, David, if you'd come on up to the podium over there and our clerk will come down.
My favorite is Mr. Zellman's chair. I will support the Constitution of the United States. I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Illinois. Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge to Dewey's. I will faithfully discharge to Dewey's. Of the office of Elk Grove Township trustee to the best of my ability. The office of the Elk Grove Township trustee to the best of my ability.
David? Let's get you sit here. Brian's comes out right now. I think what I, like, what Paul reminded me, um, that even though it's not necessary, it probably would be helpful for the, for me to have the board acknowledge Vince's resignation just so we have it in the record. So can I get a, a motion to, um, to accept Vince's resignation, please?
So moved.
A second.
All right, uh, there's no further discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Now where things official. Vince, you're out, he's in. All right, so, um, David, I'm, uh, I'm glad to have you aboard here and, um, I'm sure, um, I'm going to be gone for two weeks, but when I get back, I'd like to sit down and you and I can go through a variety of things, where we stand and what's going on. This is kind of a quiet time of the year right now. Uh, we're just finished up with the budget and, um, and, um, and we, are, are, are not, at this particular stage, just a lot of, of business going on, and we'll pick back up as we get through the summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, the elected officials' reports. Uh, the assessor's report, please.
You have my written report, but, um, since I wrote that, it's even gotten busier. The postcards regarding senior freeze, senior exemption, homeowner's exemption hit the mailboxes last week. Uh, as I wrote in my report, we had over 300 appointments made last week that will start this week, so you can imagine that, um, it's busy. Since a lot of the postcards hit on Saturday, the phones went absolutely berserk this morning, and so we will be going into our usual wartime, uh, mode of coming in early, making sure that phone calls are returned within a 24-hour period and appointments made. So, uh, this scheduling works out well from the standpoint that at all times, two people are doing appointments, one person is available to, for walk-ins. Uh, we were very heavy in walk-ins today, but if they didn't choose to wait, then they had the opportunity of making an appointment. So that's the way we're handling it. We will get through this. As you may or may not know, these notifications usually come out in late January, early February. And so you can see that, again, the county is very far behind on, um, on its goals. And that would conclude my report unless you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the assessor?
No.
Okay. Clerk's report?
Well, I got my postcard today, but that's all I can say. Um, I, on my report, there's two FOIA requests. One is regarding, um, residential property and one commercial property, and, um, the information they needed was given to them or told where they need to, who they need to contact for that information. Also, both of our budget ordinances were filed last month, and then the last item, excuse me, I put the dates of the parades, um, on my report. Mount Prospect is always July 4th, which is a Tuesday this year. Elk Grove will be Saturday, September 16th, and I already gave trustee Perns a plug to come join us, so, um, just mark those dates on your calendar. And that's it, any questions?
I think that, um, I think that you probably need to talk with Vince so that we coordinate for participation in the market days, um, and that we have at least twice, at least twice, the presence there at it. Can you coordinate with Vince on that? Is there anything else that, uh, this, that you, that, that with you stepping down, we're going to need to find somebody else? So I'm trying to think of... No, we're, we're working with you already, the Lions Club with the shredding and everything, so that's...
Yeah, there's that, and then the only other thing that, um, I had the intentions of starting was the ride-along and the senior bus.
Okay, yeah, let's, 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 let's talk too on that. Okay, so if you can make a note that we follow up on the, with the market day and the ride-along and shredding, okay?
But you're also at the block party.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, the block party too.
Okay, got it.
Okay. All right, uh, supervisors' report. Um, regarding construction, uh, the construction in the back of the building is progressing. Uh, the bath, uh, bath, the bathroom is largely completed, and the work in the youth and the bike safety space is also largely completed. Um, the, um, the issue that we, what arose is that, um, as we went and got permission to, um, to, to complete the project, we were notified that, um, we needed to do the changes in the zoning rules. We are going to need now to put in, um, visual alerts for fire in any space that anyone in this building could potentially be in or stay in, or whatever the case may be. So that means even in the basement, we'll have to put strobe lights in there, uh, for fire, fire alerts, even though all that's down there is the boilers. This is going to cost us probably $50,000. Um, and, um, it's, to me, it's totally unnecessary, but it's, you know, it's the village. So, um, at this particular stage, I've given permission for them to go ahead with that project, uh, because if that's what the zoning rules are now, even if they seem ridiculous, it's, we have to follow that. That will not slow up the further progress in terms of the construction in back. The bike safety should kick off in the next several weeks, as, as well as the challenge course. Along with that will be the resurfacing, um, well, first they do demolition, then they'll start with the, they'll clear out the area, then we'll see the, the, the new asphalt put down, new fencing, new, 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 new gates put in, um, and then the bike safety and the, and the challenge course go in. There's also a possibility, there's a corporation that has, uh, uh, approached, Corey, about donating a, um, a greenhouse, not a large one, but a modern, modern-sized greenhouse, um, that, uh, that if, if, they would have naming rights, but then we could use for youth or senior purposes for growing vegetables and things for the food pantry. And that may not be, I mean, that would be, uh, the department heads for youth services and social services feel that that would be something that they could use and that they could, um, there'd be value in that beyond just the food, but it also in teamwork and activities for seniors and the likes. So that's, that is being explored at this particular time. Uh, two other issues. One, um, if you guys know where the Real Fire District is, where Lineman, um, dead ends into it, South Lineman, uh, that road is in particularly, or is in particularly bad shape. The village of Mount Prospect approached, approached us and said that they, um, wanted us to fix the road. Um, and they actually done work on determining how much it would cost, $120,000, and, um, and, um, and I said, you know, I indicated, I said, "Well, it looks like, you know, you did a heck of a lot of work for us to do, um, and I would appreciate if you had talked to us first before we went through all this." Um, that said, uh, it is, Paul and I determined, we were very sure of this, because in 2016, the village annexed that whole area. Um, and on the annexation, uh, documentation, the pin for that road is specifically in the annexation, um, document. At the same token, um, I also thought, well, that it was private. I thought the Real Fire District owned it, um, and that it was their road, but I knew for sure, I mean, I knew for sure it wasn't ours. It was either the Real Fire District's private road that they had to maintain, uh, themselves, or it was the village because they had annexed that whole area. Well, in discussions with the village, uh, they indicate, "Well, when we annexed it, um, it, it isn't ours because it's not a public right-of-way. This is something we can look at, at another time." That's fine, but, um, in any case, it's, that must be private. And that determination is still, is still being, uh, resolved at this point, but it is, it is, I've indicated it's, it's not our road, and, um, in 2018, when we did the upgrade of all our roads, you know, the loan that the Cut Road District took out, uh, when we did that, we did not include that in that, 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 um, that repair program because it was either private or it was theirs. It wasn't ours. So, um, at this particular stage, uh, we have indicated to the village that we had, we are not intending to repair the road, that it's either the, the Real Fire District's or theirs, which means when they take over the Real Fire District, it's theirs. Um, and that we have been clawing at it as a courtesy of the Ro, to the Real Fire District, and that, um, that we really don't even have to be doing that. So is there any, any questions on that? That's where it stands right now, and, um, and I don't know if you guys have any, any, any questions. That's, that's, that's in connection with working with the village manager and the public works. Okay? Um, the last thing would be that I think, Dick, you've got the Social Services Review Committee, um, with its first meetings, or I should say its second, but basically its first meeting coming up in the next several weeks?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and that, that, that committee will be meeting, uh, on a schedule that they'll establish at their first meeting, and will be coming back to the board with, um, their recommendations or their analysis recommendations, probably sometime this summer, a little later than we ordinarily would want. We would be looking early June, but it'd probably be a little later because we got started later. This is the committee that looks at all our social service programs and looks at them in terms of are they needed? Are they effectively being managed? Or, and is there anything that we're not doing that we should be doing? And finally, to look at other ways that we could cooperate with other government bodies so as to improve the quality of the service, um, that we each are providing, or in a way to make sure we're not duplicating what the taxpayer is paying for. So that, Dick is the chairman of that, and, um, I think Dewey is basically his secretary. And, um, we have, um, we have three residents on the board, of which Vince is now a resident, and we have, we have four, uh, we have four, um, members of our, of, of Elk Grove Township, two trustees, two staff. Now, I'd probably be appointing a fourth resident to the board, even though that is more than what's required in the policy, but, um, Christie, what's Christie's last name?
Skorzaski.
Yeah, that's it. She volunteered, she's a teacher, uh, very interested in serving on the committee, and I believe there's no reason why we can't add another resident to the committee, and so she'll be, uh, working on the board, so we'll have four residents. Um, let's see, I think that's, I think that's all I have. Anybody have any questions of me at this particular stage? No? If not, um, can I get a motion to approve the elected official reports?
So moved.
Second.
If no discussion, okay, uh, roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Abstain.
Trustee, uh, sorry, Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Uh, there is no correspondence, there is no old business, there is no new business. However, there is a, um, a discussion in comments, um, among the trustees here regarding, um, the, a discussion over the Real Fire District status.
And the parade.
Pardon?
The parade items.
Oh, what's that?
About whether we want to sponsor the Elk Grove Parade.
Oh, I didn't have it in here. It's not in the agenda, so I can't...
The agenda was changed. Do you have the new?
Oh, I don't have the one I printed.
Oh, you know what? I probably made those up before I did the recipe.
Okay.
But that's the paperwork.
All right. Okay, yeah, it isn't on mine. That's what I, I always get the stuff that, I always get the wrong stuff. Um, all right, so that'd be under new...
I don't have it either.
So you're, you're not alone. Okay. It's tough to get good help these days, isn't it? Tough to get good help these days.
I believe it was, it's been in a package.
It was added on Monday, right? Or Friday, Monday?
There was an addendum.
Thank you, Connie.
Anyway, under new business, uh, there is an item, proposed sponsorship of the Elk Grove Village Parade. Would you please address it?
Um, let me look in there. Nobody has it, right? Um, I got a letter from, um, Mayor Johnson, and they asked if we would be interested in sponsoring the parade.
In addition to our participation.
In addition to our participation. And to me, it sounds a little more like businesses than maybe government agencies, but, um, there's three levels of sponsorship, $250, $50, sorry, $250, $500, or $750. The things that you would get from sponsoring are, um, at $250, a parade sponsor plaque and acknowledgement on Channel 6. If you do $500, it adds your company name on a sponsorship banner, and if you do $750, it adds being recognized at the village board meeting. So something for us to consider.
And what is there, is there a deadline on that?
Yeah, the deadline is Friday, September 1st. Yeah.
All right, so, uh, we'll make sure everyone gets the, gets the information, and then at the next meeting, uh, we can have discussion and decide whether we want to sponsor or not. This isn't something that we regularly do, but, but that doesn't mean we can't do it, particularly because we're participating in the parade. So we'll make sure that this information gets out to everybody, and we can deal with this at the next meeting if that's, if that's okay. All right? Uh, let me go to the discussion and comments then, is there any, any other new business or we?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right. Um, so we, we have an issue, um, that we've been indirectly involved with for a period of time now. The Elk Grove Fire Protection District, if you remember, is a, is a, uh, a government body which we initially helped organize, um, 30, 40 years ago, um, to provide, uh, fire and emergency services to unincorporated areas. What they'll do is, what we'll do is a, a, a fire district can be established, uh, the township usually is involved in its establishment, um, a referendum is held, if it's approved, uh, then the, um, then the, uh, the body is established. We help them then establish their taxing authority, um, and then initially, in this case, and in these cases, we would appoint, we would be responsible for appointing the board. Um, the, the, they provide then the services for the areas that are, that they have, the unincorporated areas that were designated when the referendum passed through. Today, uh, what this Elk Grove Fire Protection District, the areas that they cover, because annexation has reduced their, their areas, um, it is now about 1,400 units, 3,500 residents, and several industrial, commercial properties in, in our township. Those areas are largely manufacturing homes areas, Blackhawk, Displanes, um, Oasis, and then Willow Terrace, Rapolo subdivision, and the industrial, some industrial, commercial areas like where Hamilton is in Mount Prospect. The services are provided contractually by American Fire, or they were, American Fire and Rescue Corporation. However, this was a month-to-month contract, it was recently ended with retirement of the American owner and chief. Uh, the current services now are being provided contract... The current services now are being provided contractually by Metro Fire, with a reduced staff, and the contract terms are, are unknown. The annual call volume in the district is approximately nine hundred, nine hundred calls a year, including, which includes mutual support, so they actually answer about three hundred. Previously, the district handled the service demand with five firefighters per shift, and at least one of which was a paramedic, and then the chief. They operated an engine, tanker, and ambulance. Today, now that Metro's taken over, the equipment is the same, but Metro's only providing three firefighters per shift, and it is unknown if any of, there are any paramedics, and you need paramedics to run the ambulances. The district is overseen by a board of five elected residents. Prior to the mid-eighties, the board was appointed by us. That was changed by referendum to an election of the board. Current board members consist of two couples, and an individual who all reside in Repolo subdivision. Those couples are the, the Maldanos?
Maldonados.
Maldonados.
Maldonados, and the, what, what's, you wouldn't think I'd forget those families. Anyway.
That was the same Maldonado?
It's the same ones, yeah.
That were in here for the signage?
Yeah, for the signage. The same, those two couples, and then another member from that community. So all of the board members reside in Repolo subdivision. Due to the municipal annexation of the unincorporated areas, as I said, has been happening and reducing the, the area that they serve, the district's taxing base is unable to meet its operational needs anymore. The district has been operating in a structural deficit for several years, and it's drained its resources. Expenses are about one point eight million a year. They have revenue from property tax of about nine hundred thousand, and the levy, as you know, like with us, is capped. We can, they can only raise it so much each year. Reserves are probably somewhere around zero right now. The district is currently operating on a county loan of possibly four hundred thousand, don't know that for sure. The loan was apparently possible due to the delay in the second installment, property tax installment, when we just got, that just came in, which is like four months late. Well, but the county is, is helping taxing bodies that experience significant difficulties due to delay, to do that delay. However, this is not a solution to the district's financial problems, it's only short-term Band-Aid, because there's this, their cash flow is negative, and it's, it doesn't matter if they got this four hundred in advance of that money, it's, it's going to burn through. They're running a negative deficit. The neighboring municipalities in Mount Prospect, Elk Grove Village, and Displanes were aware of the emerging financial crisis, and developed a plan for ensuring that the areas covered by the district did not experience a disruption of services. Under this plan, the municipalities would establish an intergovernmental agreement, where each municipality would take responsibility for providing fire and EMS services for a section of it. There's three different sections, and each are taking a different section. The, each of them would then establish a special service area for each of their areas. These SSAs, as they're called, would generate a minimum funding resource of about one million annually. Mount Prospect would collect and distribute the funds based on the calls executed by each municipality, including the mutual support that they had for each other. The total SSA taxation would result, as I, as, as, as I indicated, in about a, would actually probably cause a five percent increase in the taxes that the district residents would pay for these services, which is rather minimal, to be quite honest. However, it's only one million that they're having to raise, not one point eight, so in the long run, that's positive. That's, that, that's, and the reason for that is due to economies of scale. You've got three villages providing their resources, and you're spreading that over a fixed cost base, and so it makes it more cost-effective. So the operating costs would be considerably less than what they are right now. In return for the rescue of the fire and EMS services, the district board would be required to call for a referendum, dissolve the district, and to sell or transfer its assets to the municipalities. These terms include, they would give, the municipalities would give the district fifty thousand to do its wind-down, and to do the referendum. The district fire station, which is there on Lineman, the road that's, was talking about, that's all beaten up, that would be deeded to Mount Prospect, who would staff it with six firefighters and additional equipment. The district tanker and tender would be re-titled under Mount Prospect, to retain for use of the station with the other equipment that Mount Prospect would bring in. The remaining district assets would be liquidated with fifty percent of the share going to the Elk Grove Village and Displanes, because Mount Prospect is getting the property and the equipment, and fifty percent covering legal fees are credited to the SSA levy, so it would reduce the levy initially for the residents. The dollars generated by this liquidation were, would likely be minimal, given to how they've run down all their funds. The remaining, the, the municipalities have signed the IGA, and have established their SSAs. The district board, however, has refused to sign off on this agreement, and has instead demanded that all district assets be liquidated, and the proceeds be paid to the residents through a tax rebate. The municipalities have found this to be unreasonable, and have called for meetings to seek a compromise. They have indicated, even indicated recently, a willingness to consider some sort of payment for the station and the tanker, which would be credited then, another credit then to the SSA tax levy. So it would once again be another reduction in what the residents would have to, would need, would be levied for the first, first year or two. The district board, however, has refused to meet with the villages, and appears to be insisting on the rebate and not a credit. So there's a stalemate emerging despite an impending collapse of the district. There have recently been indications that the Repolo subdivision, where all the board members live, has been purchased by a developer. Since the entire board is comprised of Repolo residents, that creates another uncertainty, because if they're purchased and they move out, then suddenly there would be no board members. So, and that, and this is all really complicated in terms of how this is all kind of dealt with if certain things happen. If the district simply ceases to exist, ceases to operate, the municipalities will have to step in to provide interim protection coverage, and they probably seek, would seek then legislation that would, because a referendum wouldn't have been held, they would seek legislation that would dissolve the, the, the district then.
Because you've got nobody to vote on it.
Pardon?
You'd have nobody to vote on.
No, they, no, and, and the, the thing is, the villages would be stuck with having to take care of it, until that legislation went through, and they would be able to, to tax, to raise the money to pay for it. So, when this, when that happens, there'll probably be a delay, it will create problems for the, for the district, even though the, the villages would be probably covering for them, would be covering it. There will be delays probably in dispatching, and possible delays in response, simply because they're not structured to take care of that area at this particular stage. Also, the residents of the municipalities will be subsidizing the residents of the district, because the, the residents of the municipalities will be paying for all this to be done. I guess what I'm, what I'm proposing is, we've, we have talked, at one of our meetings, we had a discussion, the meetings with the signage, if you remember, for Repolo. We also had a discussion with the village, with the, the residents there about the fire district, and they had indicated an interest in maybe using us as an arbitrator, but they are refusing to talk to the villages now. And the financial situation is getting worse, and the board members may disappear, and then we'd be left with a mess that, that may take some time to really be resolved. Why is it of any interest to us is because these are our residents. These are residents of Elk Grove Township, and many of them are residents of the manufactured homes or trailer parks, which are, in a lot of ways, in, in particular need of these services. I, I would say that a, an agreement between the district and municipalities with a follow-on referendum to dissolve the district would be the most advantageous solution for the district residents, both in terms of transition and in terms of coverage. The refusal of the district board to negotiate and compromise with the municipalities is, is in some ways right now, a little irresponsible. The uncompromising demand for the sale of all assets and a tax rebate is dismain, and I don't know if there's other reasons too, but that's the one that was presented to us at the meeting, and which I understand is their, their one main demand. Under the plan presented by the municipalities, most of the district's assets, however, will continue to be used to provide fire protection and EMS services for those residents. It's not like they're, they're not going to be used for that. Services, service will also dramatically improve, particularly over the current conditions. Three, three-man shifts with a engine and a tanker and an ambulance is just not, not functional. I mean, and if someone's causing sick or something like that, you're, you've got major problems. So the, the service will dramatically improve, and the credits of the SSA, to the SSA levy would be beneficial, and are particularly helpful to many of the residents of the manufactured home communities. And most important, there'll be no, there would be no disruption of protection services. So while we've stayed on the sidelines on this, because we don't have a direct involvement anymore, in fact, what we have, the two ways that we are connected to this is, one, like I said, that the people that are, that are going to be potentially left in a, in a negative situation, or with, with, with very difficult consequences from this not being resolved, are our residents. The other, the other way, other way is that we helped establish this, and we are still now approving their officers on their board, their chairman, vice chairman, and so forth, though I don't know if they really have to be doing that. But I think that at this particular stage, I would find it helpful, maybe not as impactful as I'd like, but helpful for us to provide a sense of the board, that basically, we can send to the board, the fire district board, indicating our, our desire for them to negotiate with the villages in good faith. And, and so, I, I passed out a consensus form here. If, if we are ready, if we'd be ready to approve that, this is just, this is, there is no enforcement, there's no legal power behind this. It would be, simply be the board saying, this is what we'd like to be done. We feel this is important, that negotiations and a resolution take place, because of our concerns for our residents. We just go on record, is what it would be. So that would be, it would be a sense of the board. So what I was proposing is a sense of the board, and we can change this, or we can delay till the next needing if we need to. If people need time to think about that, that's fine. But what I was proposing on the sheet is, it is the consensus of the board, of the, of the board, that the Elk Grove Fire Protection District should meet with the village of Mount Prospect, Elk Grove, the villages, the villages of Mount Prospect and Elk Grove, and the city of Displanes, to discuss and reach an agreement on a plan to avoid the disruption and potential significant degradation of fire and medical service to the district's residents and business owners, due to the failing financial state of the fire protection district. Furthermore, the board finds the current proposal being made by said municipalities to be reasonable and beneficial to all parties involved. At the very least, that is a good starting point for honest and responsible negotiations and compromise. This board is deeply concerned about the fire protection district's current unwillingness to aggressively and sincerely work with said municipalities to reach an agreement, since the failure to do so potentially, has potentially significant negative safety consequences for a substantial number of our township's residents and business owners. Is there any discussion on this?
No.
No, I think it's important, I mean.
No.
No? Vince, you can contribute.
I, you know, I, I.
You probably know a little bit more.
I agree with, I agree with Dick. You can't leave the people hanging, right? And you, and you can't have, in this, in the financial situation they're in, you can't have a fire district board not wanting to better the, not only the financial side of things for, for everybody that's included in it, but, I mean, at the end of the day, the residents are the ones that are impacted the most. And I, I don't see how there's an option.
I think that, you know, just since we're, we're in discussion now, I, I don't understand, I'm dismayed a little bit, that they're not willing to, they're not willing to work out a, they're not willing to, more, they're not willing to even meet and discuss the situation. Also, I think what's disconcerting to me a little bit, is that not only are they letting this go to a point where they would just cease to operate, and, and there would be a, a black hole in terms of coverage, where the villages, because they're not going to let a house burn down, will probably, will, will go in and, and respond, maybe not as quickly as, as they ordinarily, ordinarily would be able to if they were established to do this. But I, I think the thing that, that most dismain is that the, the board is all Repolo residents, and if they're being bought out, what's, what's the, why, why are they, why are they continuing with this, when the consequences will not be for them, they'll be for their neighbors and for the other people in the district? If, if they're moving, and the board suddenly, it's totally vacant, and the board ceases to exist, and they're broke, then all of a sudden, they're gone, with the deals they got with the developer to sell their homes, and yet the, the trailer parks are all left holding the bag.
Yeah, well, how long's it going to take for legislation?
That's, that's the other, the, the villages have to do intern, intern services, which may not be, I mean, they certainly are going to provide as the best services they can, but given the fact they're not, this is, they're not structured, this is something they're just doing in addition, it, it probably will not be of the same quality they would provide if, if this was a smooth, orderly transitional process. I also, the, I'd also note that the demand for the, the demand for the, for the sale and the rebate of all assets is, to me, a little bit disingenuous, because the argument here is that, hey, we, we paid for all this equipment, and so we should be, we should be reimbursed for it, we should get a rebate for it. Well, everyone that's ever lived in that community has paid for that equipment, and they, those people, as they moved and things like, they didn't have equity. It's not like then they were refunded for, for when they left, for what they invested in the, so all along time, the residents in there have, all of them have invested and put money, so to speak, into, into maintaining this, this program, and there's no reason why just the residents now should get the rebates back, if, if that's their argument. Furthermore, the, the assets that would be turned over to the Mount Prospect Displanes in Elk Grove, now basically Mount Prospect, because that, there will be running that station, are going to be used to service the community still, still going to be using to service it. And then finally, you know, the SAA, the payouts, the credits are going to give the SAA to the service, service, special service areas, will reduce the taxes for the current, the residents going forward, for, for a period of time, the credits going there. So, the reason for the rebate, it would, to me, it's, maybe it's just for the Repolo residents, because they wouldn't benefit from the credit, but they would from the rebate. I, I don't know.
Isn't, I mean, obviously not being attorney-specific in this area, but isn't there some, there has to be some sort of, of state statute for this sort of thing, that they just can't walk away and, and, and dissolve a fire district and leave?
No, it's, it's, it's a, there's a normal process, but, but because this board is not participating in that, or not cooperating in that process, it becomes sort of out there. Nobody knows exactly how, what have we done, or how it'd be done. In the past, legislators had, the legislature's had to step in and pass a resolution to, to resolve it, I mean, to, to liquidate it, because it doesn't fit the normal process of referendum dissolving, and then a, an IGA by the local people, local business, I mean, local municipalities to take it over and provide a system for it.
And I understand that part of it. I'm speaking specifically now, because it's putting the lives of people in danger.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and that's why I think maybe we need to, to at least step forward and make, put our, put our, put our opinion forward, or our, our advice or recommendation forward, because this is now getting to the point where I think we have potential safety issues for, Dick, you were saying something?
No, is there, is there a financial, is it a different financial impact? I mean, levy, the tax on the, on the residents there?
Yeah. The fire district, their fire district has a, has a levy that, that they, they put, like we do every year.
Sure.
And their levy generates now about nine hundred thousand, and it can only go up, as you know, five hundred thousand, I mean, five percent without a referendum. So, they're, they're, they're running well behind what their operating costs are.
I understand that if the municipalities take it over, they won't be, it won't be an increase in.
They'll, what they'll do is they establish a special service area, so there's a special tax for that area. That tax would replace what they're paying now to the service, to the fire district, and, and that would be about five percent higher, is what it would be.
Okay.
Than what they're paying now.
Okay.
But.
But the services.
The, the service, yes, would be dramatically, in my opinion, would be dramatically better, and the overall operating cost of the, for providing that service is reduced, and as a result, you're not going to get a, the same type of increase in your, in your taxes every year, to try to catch up.
Do the, does, in the manufactured homes, do they pay property tax?
They pay, they pay the special district tax, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, okay.
And they, they pay.
They, and they, they pay a property ta, they pay property taxes.
They do, okay.
And one of, one of the line items on the property tax will be for the, for the, for the Elk Grove Fire Protection District.
Right, okay.
You don't have that, but they, that district, people in that district would have that additional line item.
Okay.
Now, that would be, go away, and then there'd be a new SSA, or special service area, um, uh, item, addition to their property tax, that would replace that, and that would potentially be five percent higher than what they were paying before. But their services would be dramatically higher, there'd be no disruption in their services, and they would, the likelihood of increases in that would be less than what you would have under the current situation.
Right, okay.
Dale, you got any question?
No.
David, this is all new to you, huh?
It's new, as long as safety, it sounds like safety is the big issue, and if safety goes up, then that is our duty to.
I think in this case, we don't have a, we don't have anything that we can, that we have authority or power to do, uh, but we, we certainly, as, as a government body that, that deals with the people affected by this, we, I think we have a responsibility to, to say something, at least at this point, because it's not getting resolved. All right, do, do we, do we want to approve a, a sense of the board at this meeting, or do you want to think about it and do it at the next meeting?
Why don't we just go ahead and vote on it?
Okay, is that okay? Is there, is there any questions? I see there's a grammatical error too in here, but is there any que, is there any problems with the statement as written?
No.
Okay, if not, then, um, this is a sense of the board, so I, I'm just going to ask for a voice vote of, to, to approve this. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's a sense of the board that, uh, the, the sense of the board is the statement, and we will have that delivered to the, the special, to the, uh, fire, fire district. Um, yeah, okay. Any, any other questions, any other discussion at this time that the board would like to go, would like to address? Like I said, um, the big thing we're hoping to get done in the next couple of months is the construction on the back. Once we get that done, then our basic capital expansion, our capital programs will be resolved, I mean, completed, largely completed, uh, we can take a breather, focus a little more on the projects for a while, then there's one or two other ideas that I think we can discuss, uh, to improve our facilities, um, in certain areas. But right now, we just need to get this initial project finished, done, and behind us. It's been, what, six years now or so? So, okay, if there's nothing else, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, meaning is adjourned. Congratulations.